Stacy Alvarez.
Here.
Myra Crook. Joanne Lakem. Georgia McNabb.
Here.
Nevada Smith.
Here.
Justin Collier.
Here.
Mary Reese.
Here.
I don't think Gail is here yet, but I do expect her, so she may join us at some point. But we do have a quorum.
Public comments? We want to say that.
Thank you very much, members of the board of trustees. My name is Laurie C. Sina. I'm the president. It's great to see you all at your end of public meeting finally. Even though we might argue about some of the issues that's important to our county, I appreciate seeing you all and your help and your care. I'd like to say a shout out to both Robin, the Secretary of the Board, and Jason, the Executive Director, that I'm enjoying the transparency broadcasting meetings live, putting meeting packets on the district's website. I think that's a step in a positive direction of transparency and opening up government for 440,000 residents. The staff that you run has done an excellent job.
He says he did it on their end.
They show extreme patience. Sometimes they come across hospital clients, residents.
Mr. Sina, can I ask you to talk into the microphone, really?
Sorry.
There you go.
Sometimes they've shown extreme patience. I've watched them in action and they've dealt with those patients very professional, very helping, like trying times we're going through. So I want to put a shout out to the overrun library staff. The next thing that I want to talk about is landmark contracts, that construction management contract with Calipue. As you all know, we have professional staff that are on staff here. We have two full-time people that work on facilities and construction management. It was, in my opinion, an unnecessary contract. And I also want to question the ethics and how landmark came to the library district. It's kind of ironic that landmark is also doing a Justice Center project for St. Charles County, and they were the only bidder. And so I asked them a couple questions to make sure the taxpayers' money are being spent wisely and they were not giving somebody a favor in this contract. The next thing I'd like to address on the agenda is the industrial revenue bonds. I want to make sure that somebody from the staff or the executive's office of the library district attends public hearings and give good public testimony. The city of St. Charles has a tax abatement in the amount of $2.2 million, which will really affect our library district. The city of Wentzville has a $24 million tax abatement, which definitely will affect taxpayers and our capital improvements and the operations of our library district. So I want to make sure that we show up to these public hearings and testify that I think you're aboard with me and you are opposing these giveaway programs. The next thing is book mobile in the amount of $315,000. The book mobile, book mobile is a great idea, but it's a wrong timing. In today's trying times, today's economic times, people out of work, people trying to make ends meet, it just sends a wrong message to our taxpayers. I'm asking the board, I know that you want to reach out to rural areas and areas that aren't certified by the library district, but in today's trying times, I want to put that money on hold because it's just not the right time. And finally, number six, the director is asking you to close libraries. They close on August 4th and November 3rd, but in the meeting packet, I don't see which six libraries are going to be closed. I just ask for transparency for the public to plan their schedules, that we name those six libraries, so people know which are going to be excluded on August 4th and November 3rd, and I believe that there's going to be curbside services that will be available. Thank you very much, Manager Lauren.
You only give me the ones who have comments online or who say they're on the list?
That is correct.
Okay. So then that would take us to our importance of correspondence, the financial report.
So you have your packets, the June 30 first draft. So basically you'll have three different June, sorry, June drafts before you actually go to Hobbit, CRM, who are collecting additional information as we go along. So with year-to-date, we are pretty solid as far as our revenue, we're almost 100% of our revenues are, are pushing strong versus salaries and money spending. So again, it's like we continue to get invoices in and accrue amounts and things of that nature. So you'll see two different versions of, two additional versions of this. So if you have any questions regarding the actual information or if you have any answer of any questions, we will have interim audit the first week of August, first and second week of weeks in August, and then they'll be back for the full audit in October. So where the process is going on that. Again, it's at the September meeting that you'll actually be setting the tax rate for fiscal 21 budget year. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. All right, next is the director's report.
All right, thank you. So just a couple of things that you'll notice the written report is abbreviated from my usual. I just really wanted to focus on a couple of things, wanted to focus on buildings and facilities, and then kind of where we are in returning to service. So just a little bit on buildings and facilities, you see we're going to discuss later a budget amendment to cover the retaining wall, and I just included some pictures there so you can see the piece of the retaining wall that did collapse, the admin building, and how the entire structure is leaning. And then the other piece to mention is you do see some images here of the Catherine Lineman teen space, which is nearing completion. It is beautiful. And then unfortunately, you can see juxtaposed the rest of the Catherine Lineman branch around it, which is less so. That's right. Well, maybe this one, I'll do this. And so at this time, I want to have Laurie St. Lorrie give a little bit of sort of some report on where we are with the Catherine Lineman branch and the flood remediation, and then I will discuss return to service of it.
Sure, thank you. So I think you all know that it's been a couple months since we had our flood damage there after a very major storm. And as a result, we've had consultation with a number of remediation companies, people who deal with waterproofing, and also our Claria Clean, who has done some of the removal and demo of the damaged materials. We did not find any bacterial information, microbial, I should say, microbial evidence that was left in the building. Everything was removed as part of the remediation, which was good news. We did, however, find a series of, like a history of damage with water problems. And as a result, we have now, we're waiting on an engineer to come and take a look at some of our additional problems that we've identified. One of the characteristics that we found during the dryout period after things were very wet was hydrostatic pressure creating bubbling up and sort of fizzing of water in the surface areas that were wet. So that's an issue that we're not sure how we will remediate, whether we will need to add some sump pumps or repair parts of the foundation, create some additional grading in the landscaping to move the water away. We have also determined that the soil that the building was built on was farm soil, animal farm soil. So we know that there might also be some history of shifting layers and maybe some natural gases caused by the animal waste that maybe will also cause us to have to put in some vents to help remediate the issue. So yeah, it's a longer process than we had hoped at first, but we have already removed most of the damaged materials. The demo phase is complete. We've identified some replacement desks and things like that that we'll need to put on. We're now just waiting on the engineers' presentations and reviews so that we can make sure that we won't have to do this again anytime soon.
Any questions about that at this point?
Do I need to start my video into or just? How old is Catherine Lineman?
Goodness, I think the last renovation is about 15 years ago. And before that, do you know, Robin?
Like how old the building itself is?
2008, I think, was the last renovation.
So that's when it was enlarged and renovated. But before that, it's down there probably 20 years before that.
And then what about like insurance coverage or would it be insurance or?
So. Asia says 1983.
1983. Thank you, Asia.
So as far as the flood remediation, we were reimbursed $25,000 for that piece of it, but beyond that, we'll have to assume those costs and take them as a reserve.
So any of the correction to the hydrostatic pressure, the stuff we were talking about, that would be out of the library's budget. There's no insurance coverage for that, I guess.
Correct.
Okay.
Jason, is there a timeline that you're looking at from being able to get it back on?
So we hope to be able to bring to the meeting next month any expenditures that we would need approval for. That's what we're looking for an engineer, is that correct?
Well, the engineer has been identified, but we haven't had him on site yet. We're waiting for him to commit to an appointment. As a next meeting, we may be closer to a timeline to get it back on.
Yes. Yeah, and then, as you mentioned, we are providing, will be providing materials from the Shantung School for curbside and return. So at least bringing some sort of physical service to that library. Anything else on that before we go on? Okay, so just a little bit of a review. We began phase two on June 22nd. So phase two is when we opened for limited hours in the buildings, no meeting room access, still no in-person programming, and we do have limited building capacities, and it has gone. I think well, some of the buildings have been capacity occasionally, but it's not been overwhelming. I think staff has done a really good job being able to manage the flow of people. And in general, I think our public is really happy that we are open and they are understanding of the limits. As I'm sure you all know, we are concerned, as you are, about increasing phases here in St. Charles County and nationally as well. And we're beginning to see some libraries scale back. They moved to a smaller service. I mentioned in the report, two really big ones, Columbus and Cincinnati in Ohio, have both gone back to just offering curbside because of what they've been seeing. And some of the areas in Missouri that weren't hit as hard at first, they are now seeing phases, so they are going back as well. So, and we know that's a possibility. We are fortunate in that we have not had, at least to our knowledge, or anything that's come to our attention, any employees that have tested positive. We certainly had employees who were tested, had reason to be tested, we've had employees who have children, spouses, and so forth that tested positive, but we have not. Both, you know, the other major areas in the library, the other two, or in the other two major libraries in the area, the big ones have both had to close one or more locations temporarily because of employees that have tested positive. So we're ready for when that happens, and I mean, it's in some ways fortunate that we've been able to see how those other libraries have handled it, and we will certainly follow suit when it happens. And I say when, because I think it will. There's a certain percentage of the population that is impacted by the virus, and we employ hundreds of people, so if it stands to reason, we will see that same percentage affect our employees. So we are ready for it, though, and we will be able to address it as we need to when that situation arises. And like I said, the return to service team developed a plan that is flexible, and I don't know that we ever really thought it was going to be a steady forward progression, that there might be times you would have to go back, and we're ready to do that if warranted. So with all of that said, though, we were able to move from phase one to phase two pretty quickly because it really just depended on us. There was nothing in the outside world that impacted why we would move from phase one to phase two. What mattered was we obtained enough PPE for staff. We were able to install the plexiglass barriers. We were able to make physical changes to the arrangements. So moving beyond phase two, though, that is more dependent upon what happens with the virus. And so that's not something we're going to be able to move to as quickly. And I think we're really planning for a scenario that at least through the end of 2020, we're going to be operating largely as we are now in terms of the hours that we're open, not having in-person programming. I mean, I think it could very well go beyond that as well. And that appears what I'm hearing from other libraries as well. It's just, you know, the amount of time we need to plan forward, I mean, it's already July, so we work several months out when it comes to programming, for example. But then, I mean, and just in terms of staffing and scheduling and things like that, we have to, and we are working under the assumption that we will not be resuming, you know, much in the way of increased hours before the end of the calendar year. And so that's really not only the virus, but then it's also, you know, these dual challenges with the budget as well. I mean, we are understandably being very conservative fiscally, as the budget that you approved last year had about a four and a half percent reduction in revenues. So we are operating under a pretty much total higher increase right now, so we are down a number of positions. And I mean, we think that's important, given, you know, we know the situation, you know, GM just, I believe, laid off their entire third shift. Robin just said she heard from somebody that was laid off from City Group, but they laid off 5% of their staff. We know that our public is out there and they are still struggling, and these are the people who fund the library, and we want to be very mindful of the situation and very careful with our finances. So we know we were fortunate so far in that we have been able, with the exception of our unbudgeted temporary staff who were furloughed, we have not had to furlough early off any additional staff. And I want to thank you for your leadership in making that happen as well. So, but we are being very careful moving forward, and that means staff is going to have to work differently. We're starting to have some pretty frank discussions with staff, I'm with the leadership team, and with the managers, and know that we're not, we're not going to be filling any of these vacancies anytime soon. And I've said that, you know, that applies top to bottom, and I said only partially jokingly, if I were to resign, I would advocate for you not to fill on a position right now, to just, you know, we could have an interim or something internally, so I'm not resigning. But, but I mean, that's truly what I mean, that we really are taking this very, very seriously right now. So that's just an update of where we are, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sorry, evidently I have all the questions.
I know, and you have no microphone. You didn't plan this well at all.
So I know we're not doing any in-person programming. Are we doing any programming remotely, or is that an option?
Yes, we are continuing to do virtual programming, and so our adult services staff are working with branch staff. So we are delivering story times remotely and integrity of virtual programming.
And then the other question is, since we receive all of our funding through tax dollars, correct, for the most part?
Most part.
Besides the foundation, right?
And various state aid that we have actually been told we are not receiving.
Right. Does the, does the library district qualify for any of the federal government, EIDL, PPP, anything like that, or no?
It is, my understanding is no government.
Okay. Just asking. So we haven't applied or done anything on that front? It's just the budget that we have in the funding that we did?
Yes, in terms of, now, we are, certainly there are other grant programs. CARES Act is the big one, and you see in the report that we did receive $50,000 for cold blockers, so more contactless points of service. There's another grant that has opened up related to telemedicine and higher ed broadband that we'll be applying for. So there are some other opportunities for us to provide service and some money available to do that through grant processes, but nothing in terms of payroll protection or anything like that. Thank you.
Can I make a comment about that? So with the Paytech Protection Program, us being a governmental entity, we basically stepped out of service in March, so that was still in our fiscal 20, you know, budget year. So when you think about it, we were funded by tax dollars from the previous year. So when you think of a governmental entity, you wouldn't want to, you know, double-dip or, you know, expect reimbursement for that. So technically, we've been funded so far for that. Fiscal 21, a different picture.
Jason, I guess the only thing that I would say, first starts with the commendation, because certainly you run these systems before, and you know the first thing you have to do is look at managing your own budget. When you don't know if it's going to be a permanent downturn, it's more better to withhold through savings and all that. And I know you said every position, but there are some key things that I think you have to watch out for, especially, and I am seeing just one notice after another coming through from the federal government that hackers are on the attack and that they are targeting governmental entities because they figured they're an easy place to get into. So I know you're just starting that process with your, trying to really get a handle on making sure that our system is secure. And I think there's been a lot of activity in the Midwest with hackers, so I'd be cautious about being too rigid when it comes to the programs. That's the only one that comes to mind, although I'm sure there are others that are key like that, where you're only a hundred people.
Yeah, and so what I have said is, you know, I said the almost total higher increase, and it would be positions that the district, if they lost, the district as a whole could not move forward, and that's where I joke. We have a lot of library administrators, so I could be, you know, my duties could be assumed, but then I throw out, you know, Tiffany or 2,000 officer. We absolutely would need an HR point person right now, so that would be a position that we would probably go, or Julie's position, we would have to have a CFO. And I think IT positions as well, specifically for that reason. And to that, we are just starting, in fact, I started to set up the interviews, working on our IT assessment. We are moving forward with that, that is starting to take place this week, actually.
And it wasn't actually an exhaustive list, and there were things I wasn't thinking of. All right, anything else in the director's report or questions?
Nice question. I'm just, and I could have asked this first question, but I'm just wondering, what has the budgetary impact been in terms of expenditures to respond to COVID? How much have we incurred in costs so far? Sorry to interrupt.
She's actually putting that together right now. So you have, then you have the following part, like, give us a week.
Yeah, I'll have that information tomorrow. I know that you've been waiting for that technical.
Which I know. So, yeah.
Yeah. I'll record.
I mean, I believe this report, didn't you say something in the vicinity of 200,000 is what you mentioned? Oh, no, never mind, never mind. That was, charges for services are 200,000 less. But, yeah.
So I had taken on a, basically, we identified those expenses through our AP process, our accounts payable. So I had done a few runs, I'm accumulating the information. I can run a report tomorrow, have that sent out to everyone, I'd be happy to. I just wait and do that.
I'd be particularly interested to know how we've been impacted by the FFCRA and required leave, if at all.
We actually have been impacted minimal, seemingly minimal by the FFCRA. When it comes up, we, I really wasn't sure what that looked like going in, but since we captured that payroll system, we've only had a couple situations, so I would have taken advantage of that.
That's all, thank you.
I hate to be a pest, but everybody really has to use a microphone, or the folks at home can't hear you. Because this microphone is picking up everyone talking from the speaker in the ceiling. Thank you.
Excellent, turn it off. Turn the lights on, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Thank you, Robin.
The other thing I would.
Can't understand and can't hear.
Oh, that's Gail. Hi.
Hi. Sorry, it really is a struggle to hear, it's moving around quite a bit. Thanks.
Absolutely. Buteled, muffled, you can't hear about every fifth word. Every fifth word, okay.
Part of the problem, too, is probably the masks, but, so the CARES Act money from the state, part of what the county allocated was reimbursement to other public jurisdictions, and so things like cleaning, masks, other PPE, to some extent, like the materials so that employees can telecommute. The county's offering jurisdictions reimbursement for that. A number of cities have submitted their first round of that, and I think that's what Julie's pulling together to submit for reimbursement. And in addition to that, Jason was extremely generous in letting the county distribute masks through the jurisdiction, so I don't know if you've gotten those yet.
We have, yes.
I really appreciate that, because we've been trying to figure out all kinds of outlets to get them in people's hands.
All right, so statistical report. Okay, so you, for the first time in a few months, here you have a report that is back to our standard report, so you can see the impact of having our doors closed for three months. But, yeah, I think some of the, one thing that I just wanted to point out, if you look at the percent change year-to-date in circulation, it's down 13.62. We were not open for in-person service for about 25% of the year. So, I mean, it does point to we are seeing a lot of electronic materials being used. You can see that in the increase in e-media. The question there is, now that we have our buildings open again, will that increased use of electronic materials hold, or will it kind of settle back to where it was? And that's the question that the whole library industry is asking, is how this will change service on a more permanent basis. But, so, yeah, you obviously see a lot of decreases in things like gate count, but we were, I think, trending the right way up until then, so.
Any questions about the statistical report? And then the next thing is correspondence.
Okay, you have in your packet, the two letters, one from the city of St. Charles and one from the city of Wentzville regarding proposed industrial development projects.
Any questions about the correspondence received from the city of St. Charles and the city of Wentzville?
Can I just follow you on that?
Right, you're on consent agenda. We have minutes, draft minutes from the June 9, 2020 meeting for review and approval.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the June 29, the June 9 meeting of the board.
Motion for Gil. Is there a second?
Mary, thank you.
Is any further discussion? All in favor of the approval of the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. On the formal agenda, there's no old business, so new business begins with item 21-01.
And I stop sharing for just a moment because Mr. Swandrowski will be sharing a document, I believe, or maybe, maybe not. Let me unmute him so we can talk. Jason, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay, yeah, so this is the award of contract for the manufacture of the bookmobile unit. As you know, we have been working on this for many months now and for the past several, we have been working with Specialty Vehicle Services and they have been designing specifications and releasing an RFP, which was released in May, and proposals were returned on June 26. We had three proposals for the manufacture of the unit that ranged in cost from $314,000 to $395,000. We had budgeted $325,000 for this purpose and just to note, this has been the main focus of fundraising for the Library Foundation and they have raised nearly $70,000 toward that. So we did include the full amount in the budget, but we do know that a number of, or a significant percentage of that amount will be raised by the foundation. So, I will let Michael Swandrowski talk here in a moment. He is the president of Specialty Vehicle Services and he has come forward with the recommendation that we engage Summit Bodyworks. They are the, they were the low, lowest cost proposal. And with that, I will turn it over to him, he can talk a little bit about the process and his recommendation and then address any questions you might have.
Firstly, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the gathering tonight and for the opportunity to work with.
Hold on, just a second, we got, we have volume issues.
Is that any better?
Oh, a little bit. They might be on our, oh, maybe not.
I'm up as loud as I can. Okay, try it one more time, Michael.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Better? Are we good?
It's a little better, yeah.
Okay, how about this?
Talk loudly.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to first thank everybody for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Let me see if it's improved anywhere, hold on.
You gonna try again? Test 123, test 123.
That's good.
Yep, you're good.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all tonight and for, again, for the opportunity to work with the library on this important project. We put together a fantastic RFP. We sent this out to seven prospective vendors across North America, including Canada. We did fortunately receive three proposals back, which is fantastic in this day and age. And at least the low ones fell within budget, so we were pretty happy about that. As I analyzed the three proposals, I started with the lowest one first and found very, very few issues with that and I know them to be a very respectful builder. So, but once I looked at the second one from TechOps, the second higher one, they are less experienced, they've only really built one library-specific vehicle in their history. So even though it was, it was still a competitive price, they just don't have the experience to back up the number. So the obvious choice, at least for me, was the Summit Specialty Vehicles proposal out of Denver, Colorado. Again, they have built dozens of fantastic vehicles for clients worldwide and I expect nothing short.
I'm sorry?
Is it done or did it just freeze? It looks like it froze.
Michael, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Were you, were you done with your comments? Yeah.
Yeah, how much of them did you hear? I'm wondering.
Oh, most of it, it's just the screen kind of froze, so we weren't sure.
Oh, no. Oh, no. So I wholeheartedly recommend Summit Specialty Vehicles or Summit Bodyworks for your project. I think they're the absolute best fit at the lowest price, well within budget, and they build superior products.
Did you all hear that? Okay.
Thank you. Julie, I think it's in the memo in front of us, but just to reaffirm, so in the projected fiscal year '21 budget, there was $325,000 set aside for this. And so will the 70 that the foundation is raising reduce the amount that we're putting towards it?
Yes.
So we're looking at $244,619.
As, as of right now, the foundation will be using the bookmobile as the focus of their campaigns for this year as well, so there will likely.
So maybe less than that.
Yes.
So, and I only raise that because I really feel like we've made a commitment to the West Austin Portage area, that we would move forward on this. And that and the school district, you know, is largely the way that we're able to hotel that.
Yeah, I would agree both in that area, but then also I think in this time where, you know, sort of we had been planning and speaking about larger facilities in Wentzville, that is, you know, something that is off the table for the, at least the near term and this will help address that need as well. One example that we know that our flip view location, which we actually did not talk about, but is actually a little bit ahead of schedule and, and going along very well, but that is located south of I-70 and it's replacing Discovery Village, which is north of I-70. You would not think that would be a huge issue, but it actually is. We've had that comment a lot, so the bookmobile would be able to cover that area of Wentzville north of I-70 as well.
I presume you need a motion to approve then the award to Summit Bodyworks to put in order. So do I, do I have a motion for the board?
I'll move that the Board of Trustees award the contract for the manufacture of the bookmobile, Summit Bodyworks, for not much exceed $314,000.
Is there a second? Motion for a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Yes, I have it.
Yeah.
The next item is 21-02, library service adjustments on election days in 2020.
Okay. So, as explained in your memo, we, six of our locations are polling places in the primary election on August 4th, presumably they will also be polling places for the general election in November. And given our, our current operating limits and capacity limits because of COVID, most of our locations that service polling places, particularly our general purpose locations, really will have a difficult time balancing the election activities with in-person library activities. One of the reasons is they don't have their meeting rooms in service and the election activities usually happen in their meeting rooms, that's where materials are being quarantined and a lot of excess furniture is being stored. So we are very mindful of the importance of voting and of the election and we don't want to impede that in any way. You know, with the capacity limits, we don't, we don't want to, you know, deny anyone the right to be able to come in easily to be able to vote. And the best way that we can set up for these elections is if we were not open for in-person library service other than, than curbside and that, so the voting and the elections can take place in, in sort of the library proper. So, I mean, this building obviously could probably accommodate both, but again, it's those general purpose locations. And so we talked internally, and this is something that every library I've talked to is considering as well. We kind of talked through, do we limit this just to the libraries that are polling places or district-wide? And there was pretty, pretty quick consensus that for messaging purposes and to reduce confusion, it really is district-wide regardless of whether the libraries are polling places or not. We would still be offering that service via curbside, but we think this is really the best course of action for, certainly for the primary and then certainly for the general, which of course, you know, looks like it will be a very high turnout election. So, yeah, we are just asking for authorization for that alteration, the service on August 4th and November 3rd. Sorry.
Are you going to close service at the polling places? Because I'm just wondering, are you going to accommodate even for the extra vehicles from curbside and everything? If the concern is that the turnout will be high, at least in November, I'm not sure about the August election, but have you, I mean, did you consider the polling places not even being open at all?
Just in terms of not, oh, you mean not, not even doing curbside?
Right.
We did, we did consider that as well and among the branch managers, they felt, you know, given their experience with other elections, that they could, that they could be open for curbside, though I will say August 4th will be a test. If it, if it is difficult on August 4th, then definitely we would probably change that for the November election.
Thank you.
I apologize about the lack of microphones.
Oh, no, I should have stood up before. It's actually.
Jason, because I couldn't get a clear voice on, on this, I just want to verify, this would go for all of the branches?
Correct. That's what we discussed, whether that is the best thing or to just do the polling places and just in terms of clarity of messaging, messaging, if it was deemed better to, to be district-wide in all the branches.
I, I agree totally. Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that's what the decision was. Thank you.
That, that was the clarification. I, we've been asked for a clarification during public comment as to whether or not it was all, I just wanted to make sure we were clear. So that we need a, a motion to limit in-person library services on August 4th and November 3rd, 2020, to curbside or drive-up pickup and to close the buildings.
I will. I will, I will make that motion to limit the library service to curbside or drive-up pickup on August 4th and November 3rd for all of the library branches.
So we have a motion from Gil, we need a second.
Mary, thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we are limited to drive-up and curbside pickup on those days. All right, the next item is 21-03, the administration building retaining wall capital project budget adjustment.
Okay, as you saw in the written director's report, a portion of the retaining wall adjacent to the loading dock at the administration building collapsed recently and it, the wall in its entirety needs to be replaced. You can see that it's leaning. So we have gotten a quote from J.E. Novak through a cooperative purchasing agreement. So as such, it, that, it does not need approval itself, but it is not included in the capital budget for fiscal year '21. So what we're seeking is a capital projects budget adjustment in the amount of $35,000 to accommodate this repair.
Anything that you want to say about what happens if we don't prepare the wall?
We live with a pile of gravel in the.
And the loading dock does not operate.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's what I understood if you had said, is we can't, we can't use the loading docks along as the walls.
Well, and our neighbor's property could end up in ours.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do, when would the work start in Hallam and Hank?
Get their budget as soon as they get approved.
So for those of you remotely, the question was, when would the work start and how long would it take? And Laurie said that they're ready to go anytime that they get the approval.
Do you know the duration at all? I mean, is that going to?
Thank you.
I think it will take less than a month for sure, even with making sure that we have, you know, good weather and not too much rain in between with making sure the soil is properly compacted and then the rocks themselves or the papers themselves will be installed safely and more permanently, we hope.
So we have to approve the budget adjustment, but not the contract itself?
Right, because it's through a cooperative purchasing agreement with this, which is an exemption.
If the boards want to approve this, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the capital project budget adjustment, $35,000 for the repair to retain the, at the registration.
Motion for the, I'll do it in a second.
Justin Call, your second.
And any further discussion?
And any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is 21-04, which is a notice of potential revision to policy A04A bylaws of the board of trustees.
Okay, so there would be no action on this at this time because any revisions to the bylaws require a 20-day notice period. So that would, this would start that notice period. This is concerning the library board's representation on the board of directors for the Library Foundation. According to the foundation's bylaws, there's a, the board of trustees gets one seat on the foundation's board of directors. And currently, that is being served by Mary Reese, whose term is up on the foundation and actually also is, she's on an expired term for the library board as well. So, so I believe the last meeting of her term for the foundation is occurring tomorrow. And just in, in discussing, because the Library Foundation obviously deals with money, it makes sense to just connect that seat on the foundation board with whoever is serving as treasurer of the library board. So what this does, it just inserts one line into section 4.7, duty treasurer duties of, in the bylaws, to say the treasurer shall serve as the board's representative on the St. Charles City County Library Foundation's board of directors. So I can answer any questions you have now. Otherwise, this will come back next month to vote.
So that would mean if I'm treasurer, I am participating with the foundation.
That's what it would mean.
Okay.
But, so Mary's term ends in, in July, and then they're, they're quarterly meetings. So it wouldn't be until, well, I'll just say potentially a time when you're not the treasurer, so.
Any questions? All righty. I believe that is the agenda. Anything else?
That is all I have.
I will say that the staff, this is the best meeting setup that I've seen anywhere, and I've been to a lot. I applaud you all for your creativity.
Thank you.
Many thanks to Robyn and Gary for, for setting this up.
All right, I guess we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
All right. And I'll break parliamentary procedure in a second there. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.